To order, all board members are present and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as for all.
I'll make sure to pull it, hey, push it. I started to pull it and I go like.
Um, you're fine. First up is the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Lisa, second by Lynn. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Comments or requests from visitors? Quick, I'm just gonna read. We may have to use cell phones up here for any time-sensitive issues, but we may also use our devices as a tool for board work, however, our primary focus is on board meetings. So I just wanna say that. And then, first up then, for the topics is the top 10 recognition. Maria Guzman is honored as a member of the Recore Top 10 Students in 2017. Unfortunately, Maria did not receive the recognition during the graduation ceremony because of an initial calculation showed her just missing the honor. But during the review of the records, days following graduation, it was determined that the course record had not been calculated properly and additional points moved her into the top 10. It was determined that in working with Maria and her parents, that the recognition at a board meeting would be an appropriate means of honoring her work and standing. And Board Member Lynn Sherman has been asked to present the recognition.
I'm really honored to have this chance to present this to Maria. I know you're just gonna see what probably.
Yeah.
And I know that you're not only outstanding student, but you're also a great role model for all of the younger students. And you worked very hard to be a part of the top 10. And we're really sorry that this wasn't presented to you at graduation that evening. Sorry about the mistake. But you're, as I said, I'm very honored for you to present this because you did a great job in making it the top 10, or top 11 as we head up to the time of year. And you are, your information has been sent to the newspapers, so you will be recognized with all of the other students that were part of that. It's just, we're making this a little bit special since you missed out on this on graduation night. So I wanna congratulate you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I have this for you. I know it's in paper, but do you wanna tell everybody what your plans are for after graduation?
Uh, yeah. I'm attending McAllister College in St. Paul this upcoming fall. I'll be majoring in psychology on a pre-medical track.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to introduce your parents and your brother?
Yeah. So right there is my dad. He is right here. That's Carlos Guzman, my mom alongside him, Maria Ringel. And then, you might've seen him around, but that's Lopito Guzman right over there.
Well, congratulations. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
We're sorry that we couldn't have done this on graduation night, but it was nice that a lot of your friends and other people could come tonight to see this.
Yeah, thank you. It's really okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I think we're gonna go take a picture.
Okay.
For recording.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Celebration of Excellence, which we will table until seven o'clock, or whenever the recipient gets here. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, Approval of the Consent Agenda. And I'll just read down the list. Minutes from the June 12th Board Meeting, Employment Offers for the Kid Care Program, Luann Butner for a fax teacher, Valerie Clocky for the title position at CSE, James Kula for third grade teacher at Richmond, Yazelyn Castillo for multicultural liaison. There's a .5 reduction at the elementary level with Mike Rowe assuming an intervention service role, and Belinda assuming a full-time role. But it, with all the math, it equals out to a .5 reduction at Cold Spring. There are resignations of Ashley Edwards and Jennifer Ilias Sable. There's an authorization of six paras at the secondary level to meet IEP needs. There's the May Treasurers Report, Approval of the Monthly Bills, Resource Training and Solution Membership Renewal, Kemp's Milk Bids, Statement of Assurance for Long-Term Facilities Maintenance, Cold Spring Fire Panel Quotes, the Approval of the Quotes, Approval and Incentive Pay for Full-Time Classified Employees, Approval Policies 212, which is Board Committees, Policy 89, Equal Education Opportunity, and 815, Pledge of Allegiance.
There are three additional personnel items.
Okay.
Fred Doniele as an EHEL teacher, Randy Branson as a reading interventionist, and Kiel Seifert as a math teacher.
Okay.
They were additions this afternoon.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see those.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for updating that. All right. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
It didn't look like Beth pulled Cold Spring Bakery check.
They were added this afternoon.
Oh, oh, they were.
So those are under 7/8.
Oh, 7, yeah.
I'd like to approve the Consent Agenda with removal of the incentive pay for further discussion.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the removal of incentive pay. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Shannon. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So we can just put incentive pay then. We'll just add it right now to the agenda. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What was your question?
Um, I just have questions about, well, specifically because I know where we're at in the process with the superintendent. Do we not wait until our evaluations are done to approve incentive pay? It seems premature to approve that when we haven't done the evaluation. And then, what criteria do we use to determine the incentive pay for any one of these positions, I guess?
Also, the classified, it's part of their contract. My understanding is they set their goals, and if they meet their goals, then they get the set amount that's in the contract.
Yeah. They essentially all work the same way in that everybody has a goals form. And they work the goals form with their supervisor. And then, with most of the classified, there are several that are only a one-time award. The others are twice a year. And that's where the difference is shown here in that, like, the full-time classified is actually $750. And you can see in the last column on page 69, where it's split 375, 375. And so, there's been a mid-year evaluation of the progress within their goals, and then a final evaluation with their direct supervisor. And those are all typically part of their, their, their meeting with their supervisor. When you get to the second page, 70, the program managers, administrators, principals are all one, a one-time award at the end of the year. Basically, all of the forms that ask for a goal to be set, they're all very similar to what you've seen from me in that the goals are set in one column. The activities that they expect to engage in to achieve the goal or to work in the goal are in that middle column. And then the third column, just a little recording of their activities within the goals. And historically, the approach has been more of a record of engagement in the goal. Sometimes you can't control the outcome to the goal, but you can control what you do in terms of engaging in the goal. And so, they've essentially all been set in that fashion. So with the program managers, Barb and Stacy would both submit, well, Barb submits to me, Stacy submits to Beth. Jen, this time, submitted to me as well. She would normally have submitted to the curriculum director. Administrators all submit their goals and their actions within it to me.
The, is, with, with the incentive pay, if I remember from previous years, it's not a bonus in the sense that it's above and beyond, it's the con, it's with-
It's part of their contract.
The contract dollar amount, it's, is the price, and then we subtract what, and it's, we withhold an incentive pay, and then it's released at the end of the year. Is that kinda-
Essentially, that's how it works, yes.
Okay, so that's how it works. So it's not above what, like, the contract number?
Right. It's all calculated within our contract.
The other piece is with the mid-year one, the mid-year incentive pays, I don't remember-
You typically, the only one that you act on is mine, actually.
Okay.
The others are all, again, a part of their agreements, and they're approved or denied at the supervisor level.
Okay, so-
You are my supervisor, so that's the difference.
And the goals are set as something above and beyond the regular-
Yes.
-role of the position?
Correct.
So just to be clear, because again, you know, the public sees this, this is not a, this is not a bonus, even though it says 2% of the salary.
Correct.
We, if we're gonna pay and employ $80,000, we subtract 2% of the $80,000 and say, you need to do these goals and fill out this paperwork.
We actually calculated the other way around. If they would have a salary of $80,000, 2% is calculated in that, but their total contract then would be 81.6 instead of-
And this is, and that is the way it is documented when, in any other paperwork.
Correct.
That's part of their deal.
Correct.
And-
So as an example, when you see negotiations figures, their entire contract is included in those figures when we talk about changing and adjusting contracts.
So the confusing, so, you know, again, job performance, because you just said the goals may never be obtained, it's simply if, if they've tried to obtain the goals, is really what is being measured.
Engagement in the goal is how I would phrase it. Often, the goal is achieved. I'm just saying that sometimes it's a matter of engaging in the goal rather than actually measuring the accomplishment of the goal.
So job performance has nothing to do with this?
An example of one that might not be met, the year that we tried to pass a referendum. Part of Scott's goal was to facilitate the work to pass the referendum. Well, if the referendum got voted down, that didn't mean he didn't do it, you know, he worked towards doing it, but-
But if the goal is to facilitate, then he did facilitate.
Right.
Right, that's what-
Then he did perform the goal.
Right.
That's-
So it wasn't contingent on actually-
I think the confusing part is job performance versus, and making sure, because, you know, now this is public knowledge, and so someone asks the question, well, I mean, we've, we've maybe had some issues, and I'm not gonna point the issues, but the question is, well, in the, in the real world, if this is incentive for doing a really awesome job, then that's why we get that. So I think, you know, it can be a little bit confusing because that question has been brought up, you know, what, you know, how are we supposed, how is anybody supposed to understand that, I guess? So that would be-
But that's also why you get the periodic reports on the goals. And when you get the goal, you get the anticipated activities, and then you get a summary of engagement in the goal, so that you continue to have an update as to what's happening.
I think to Shannon's point, I think some of my concern is that the public hears some of the less-than-fortunate things that may have happened over the course of any given year, and then they see a document that says we're paying off this incentive pay. And sometimes, those don't, those two things don't connect in the public's eye because they might not know really how this incentive pay works. Does that make sense?
And that's, you know, and again, just working off common sense. I mean, without knowing these things. And again, this stuff is public knowledge, and so someone looks at it, and exactly what Sunny said, you know, they say, well, you know, we just had an unfortunate incident. So someone out there says, well, you know, there was a mistake there, there's a mistake, you know, and so what is the bonus based off of? So I think, you know, and again, as much as we can help people understand that, that will, that will help because it puts us in a position where, you know, we're responsible to explain to people where we're spending the money.
So if the incentive pay is based on meeting goals, has, for, cause, for all of the employees, has that been reviewed then? Is that all up to date? That's part of this process? Okay.
Yeah. And when you look through, you will, I'm not gonna highlight individuals, but you will know that some have not been paid. There's a zero in, or a lower number in some lines.
Which, so, that's not clear. Which ones, where does it show that?
Page 65, 9.
Classified agreement, page 69. Oh, yep, okay, see, I was wondering.
So that's been a conversation between the employee and their supervisor.
Okay.
And they looked at the record of goals and determined that-
So you can do anything from zero to whatever the, so if for everybody else, the goals have already been reviewed, should we be already approving the superintendent incentive pay when we haven't done that formal review of the goals? Or have we done that?
You've received them a number of times.
Right. But we haven't done that evaluation piece. Do you know what I'm saying?
And those are two separate, because the evaluation-
But the evaluation now is gonna include the section for the goals. To me, it just seems like a cleaner process. If the evaluation is evaluating the regular core competencies of the job, and it's evaluating the goals, that the pay for all of that happen after the evaluation is complete.
Back to the original question, why, why was this put, and maybe Lynn, you know this, was this because we felt like they weren't setting goals for themselves, or we wanted to tie?
We wanted something to encourage people to be full-time, full-year employees.
For classified.
For the classified. For the classified, we had a lot of issues where, for example, a position would come up that would be a year-round position, and someone would stay in a position where they only had to work nine or 10 months a year, and they would never apply for those full-year positions. So we were having a hard time, at one point, filling the full-year positions. And because their salary per hour was basically the same in many, because they were on the same level, we needed something as an incentive to get people to work year-round.
Yeah. Most of the money, though, is being spent on our, on our administrators. So I guess that was where my question was directed there. Was it because we felt that we needed to force them to set goals? I guess I'm just curious how this became part of our process. And if this is normal for schools to have these incentives? You know, it's just not a very, it's not a very attractive word to people, you know, and they don't, when it's very subjective.
Well, a lot of it, it predated QCOM here because I know that Tom had a provision in his contract before I got here, but it continued in my contract when I got here. But at the time that a lot of that was happening, QCOM was new to the state of Minnesota, and part of the reason for including it and making it the scope of what it is was to have administrators doing essentially the same things that we were asking of teachers, to engage in things above and beyond setting goals and engaging in them. And part of it was an example purpose. You know, I don't know, Lynn, you'd have to answer more, because I know it came before I even got here. That's how we talked about it when I came here.
Yeah, because most of them were put in in the 90s when there was a lot of talk of, I'm trying to think, well, different incentive plans and, and ways to get people to go above and beyond just doing their, their job and set yearly goals and all tied together. So that people were, you know, if you've been doing the same job for 20 years, there's always more you can learn about your job. So it was to incentivize people to, okay, what, what can you learn or do or change about your position to make you more efficient, to help you do a better job, or to help the district? And so, the idea was to put the goals in. So-
Oh, go ahead. So this is a goal, not a series of goals?
Well, they, each person sets their goals, and it just depends on how elaborate the goal is. I'm thinking one year-
Well, you don't, like-
So they set their own goals.
Maybe you don't evaluate them. I mean, this is, right, you, it's not like you see these goals. I mean, Scott-
No, I just know that one year, an example was one of the people in the office when some new software came in. What part of her goal was to learn the best way to put the software in place and-
Well, I guess I would like to hear, I'd like to hear from Scott on, because Scott's, you're the one that has to approve all of the goals for the administrators, and you're the one that evaluates them, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so I guess I would just like to hear from you. I mean, is it, is it working? Is it positive? You know, when people question us on this, I say, hey, this is awesome. You know, I mean, they're setting these goals, and they're, they're working and earning a percentage of their salary, you know, back, per se, is what I'm hearing you say.
Correct.
So I guess I'd like to hear you tell us what the process and the procedure is, and how these goals are, you know, what you tell us.
Again, the best example I can give you is what has been done with mine, because that's what we try to replicate across the others. So to answer Jason's question, normally, most of the folks have two to three goals for the year that they work on. As Lynn said, it could be as few as one, depending on the scope of that goal, but that's conversation between the supervisor and the employee. So like, in my case, for this year, I had, I had three particular goals that were set. When we changed board in January, we added to those and enhanced some of it. We added policy considerations to it. You've seen the reports. In my case, there are four goals that are set for the year. Part of it is, again, to outline what do I expect to do to show that I'm working in those goal areas and show that things are being accomplished. And then the third part is reporting back to you. And the last one you got had like 27 different activities in one of the goal areas and a dozen in another. And, but that's the record that indicates whether or not the goal has really been a priority for the course of the year. And so, that's when the principals submit them. Right now, they're working on setting goals for the next school year. They'll come up with their own ideas. Typically, they have two to three particular goals that they set. They'll establish a record of what they expect to be doing within the goals. They submit that to me. I review them. If they seem appropriate, I just sign off on them. If it seems like there's something else that needs to be added or a different approach to it, then we have conversation about that. But they know they can proceed when I sign off on the goals being established. And during the course of the year, there are periodic updates. We'll talk about them at individual meetings or whatever. You know, some of it's pretty easy to track because you can see what they're doing within their area, depending on what the goal is set in particular. At the end of the year, because we pay the principal and administrators at the end of the year, they submit a summary, just like you've seen from mine, of a list of all the things that they believe that they did within the goals. We review that. If, again, if I don't have any questions because it's what I've been seeing, it's consistent with what we've asked them to do. The signature at the end authorizes, you know, the compensation for it. The difference with mine is that you are the people that need to determine that. All the others, their direct supervisor is the one that works through all those pieces. But setting the goals initially, even when you go to the classified, the individual employee sets the goal with their supervisor, but they all submit them here in the district office. And I authorize or not. If I don't think the goal is worthy, then I send it back to them. It doesn't happen very often. But if I don't think it's a goal that's valuable, then I send it back, and they have additional conversation about setting the goal.
So could you give us some examples of what might have been on a classified person's?
Yeah, I looked at them about a month ago. Let me use Barb's. Barb is working with several people for a goal, their goal, and actually involves some of the classified employees as well. But their goal is, we don't have a staff handbook as such to be able to hand out to any new staff, to any existing staff. So they've been working all through the course of the year on pulling together the appropriate documents, pulling together the appropriate resources, defining things within that. At our last administrative meeting, the draft version of that was distributed to our administrators. They have had the month of June to look at that. The goal was that they get it back, their adjustments or changes that they would want to see. They get that back to Barb and the team that Stacy is another looking at that. They get that back at the end of June. Our goal is by August 1st, to have a final handbook that we will distribute among staff. We haven't had one. It was well worthy of having as an incentive pay goal. And by August, we'll, we'll have a new staff handbook. You know, they're less complicated, less complex at some of the other levels, but I do know, like, Dee was involved in that, Stacy was involved in that, several of the secretaries, one of their goals was to help with the formation of the staff handbook.
So you're, you're very well connected. So is this pretty standard practice? And is this the way, this, is this the way they do it?
There are a lot of schools that use incentive pay. We probably are more extensive than a lot of districts. QCOM schools used it a lot when they first initiated QCOM. And there are elements of QCOM that have to be a part student learning goals and professional performance goals. So those are the two things that have to be a part of QCOM. For administrators, it's a mix. It's pretty strong in this area. And if you go to the northwest or northeast corners of the state, you won't find nearly as many metro areas mixed. This area has quite a few contracts with incentive pay written into them.
So basically, we have, we don't need to approve the classified employees, the program managers, administrators, or principals?
You're really authorizing mine.
Yours, okay. So we have, we can either wait, we can either table it till the, because we have an actual review of the goals tonight in the board agenda. We can wait to talk about it till then. We can approve it now, or we can table it till after the review.
What's the timeline for the evaluation?
I have, I was gonna do an update on that later, but we, so the, we, the committee had decided to wait to send out the board survey until we have the goals. And so, now that we do, I'll send it out tonight or tomorrow. So we'll have it soon. And then, my, the plan was then to review it in the July, do the review in the July meeting.
So I'd make a motion to table the superintendent incentive pay until July for approval as part of the evaluation.
Okay, so a motion by Sunny to table it. Is there a second?
No, second, yeah.
Second by Shannon. Any further discussion?
The only thing that I would add in that, about two things that I would add in the conversation is, one, historically, it's not, I mean, the goals come out of evaluation in terms of, that's where I get the ideas for the things that are worked on or become the goals that are set. But historically, it's not been directly tied to the evaluation process. Understand that that's what we're changing to, but that hasn't been the case. The other thing that delaying till July does is, and it's more an internal issue, is that it moves the compensation out of the current fiscal year, and it creates work in the business office to create a payable, and then go back and adjust that in July because it's the end of the fiscal year. It's not a huge deal, but it does create additional district office work.
So we have a first and a second. So we have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Lisa opposed?
Also opposed.
Lynn opposed. Okay. While motion carries, we'll table it till after the discussion, a more detailed discussion of the goals in July. All right. So next up is Minnesota State High School League. I think, do we have a Recorey Proud coming in?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we do. Oh, yes, thank you.
Is he here?
Oh, he's here. Thank you for pointing to that. Okay, yes, we'll move on to Recorey Proud's. I didn't see that. So we have a Recorey Proud for the donation of shingles. Hi.
Hello.
Horizon Roofing donated the shingles for the carpentry house project that was being built during the 2016-2017 school year out by the tennis courts. I'm sure many folks identified that, but the Recorey Proud is in recognition, the report, Recorey Proud recognition is being presented to Horizon Roofing for their support of the program and donation to the project, so. Robert, do you wanna come forward? Do you wanna introduce yourself and explain a little about your business and what prompted you to make a donation?
Robert Juds, this is my name. I'm the vice president at Horizon Roofing. My daughter attends Recorey and Kurt, our president, his daughter attends Recorey as well. So we were able to help, saw that the house getting built back here, so we just wanted to help out.
Great. And do you wanna give a little plug for your business? What do you guys do?
Sure.
Construction or?
Do construction.
Roofs for commercial roofing?
Commercial roofing and sheet metal, flat buildings, and all types of siding and shingling as well for larger projects, for larger properties, so.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your donation and for initiating that.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll go round section. Okay, so we do have Minnesota High School League next on the agenda, but I'm wondering with Brian having now four children, one newborn, if we could move his ahead? Would you guys be okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. So he doesn't have to watch the Minnesota State High School League. Is that okay with you, Scott? Sorry, you're all prepared. Okay. So let's move. Oh, sorry. This is kinda moving it quite a bit. Is that, are we allowed to do that, move discussions up that far? Okay. So we'll move the discussion item A.
We're behind in our schedule anyway, so we're...
It's right on.
Golden.
Perfect. Okay. All right. Discussion eight A, technology.
Is it, what, is there a page?
No.
There's not anything?
There's nothing in the board?
There's no attachment in here, right?
Okay. So Brian?
I'll stop.
I think you, have you met everybody?
Yeah, you guys were here over there last time when I did my presentation in December, so I recognize everybody.
Okay. So you're here to talk about, I have, no, let's see, three different things. Raptor, a referendum, and, let's see where am I?
Website, social media.
Oh, and social media, thank you.
Any particular one you wanna start with? Otherwise, I'll just go down.
The most fun.
Oh, they're all fun.
Which one's the most fun?
There's nothing, there's...
There's no attachments here.
Nope. So I just have some notes just based on some of the feedback I got from, through Scott about what was discussed at other board meetings. So I'll start with the Raptor visitor system. I guess what, moving forward where we're at right now is we're looking to physically deploy the setups here in July, probably middle, end of July since we're kind of coming up to the, the Fourth of July break. I've got training scheduled for the, I'll use the shrink secretarial staff, any of the staff that'll probably be kind of deploying, people that may interact with this on August 17th at 9:00 a.m. Anybody who's not, that's not a scheduled workday, they'll still come in, they can get, fill out a green timesheet, so they'll be paid. The training will be about an hour. It'll be a web app, so my plan is to have it in here, just 'cause it's a good setup, we have the conference call phone, and then we'll move forward.
Do you have a timeframe of how you're gonna lay out, you know, walking through the processes at each school as far as, you know, a trial period? You know, maybe it's at the DEF where there's not as much traffic and you can go through and make sure that everybody understands issues that are gonna come up, how the red flags go, how we're gonna make sure that we don't have a parent having a heart attack because they can't get in the building. Have you thought that far into how you're gonna implement?
A little bit. I mean, it's kind of high level and each building's gonna have their own, kinda like you said, each building's gonna kinda have their own nuance to it. The plan right now is to go live, if you will, everywhere at once, to be consistent with the district. So somebody says, well, in this building, I don't have to get, I don't have to do it over here, but I have to do it over here. Obviously, each building already has a process for signing in and a process for checking in, supposedly checking who you are. Right now, it's pretty basic for the most part. They're just filling out a paper sheet if they even do that. Obviously, there will be, even after the training, first day of school, people are coming in. It's gonna be a learning process for everybody.
What's, what's the planned communication for parents?
So already this spring, we started in like the parent newsletters that have gone home. I distributed letters to all the buildings, to the secretaries there saying, you know, can you please include this letter explaining the system to everybody? I know I made it through Rockville because I know it came home in my daughter's packet. So I made it to Rockville at least. And I know other buildings have had, it go out, because I know you got a phone call from a parent asking some questions.
So what about new parents to the district?
Well, over the summer here, probably more in July and August as we get closer to the school year, we'll post things either on social media, we'll do kind of like an email blast through our school messenger system, our parent notification system, to try to get that word out there because we're also gonna have to notify parents about the electronic forms of retrieving bus records and bus stop information. So there'll be notifications that need to go out over the summer for that and a couple other things. Try to remind the buildings to include it in kind of their back to school packets that all the parents get at the beginning of the year. So get it to them as many different ways as we can. I'm sure it'll be that parent that says, I never saw it. It's just...
Little food for thought. I mean, I go into a lot of buildings and in most of the districts that I've gone into, they did have a pilot school. And, and it's because, you know, sending five schools live at one time, and if you do have malfunctions or something that, you know, we're not gonna know all the things. So I guess I would maybe suggest that that might be a safer route to go so that things are battle tested because, you know, the biggest issue is gonna be if, you know, the name Dennis Anderson, for example, gets flagged and it's not that Dennis Anderson, how, how do we work through that process, you know, in each building? Because obviously, we're gonna need to have somebody further that background check. I'm, you know, again, it was different, it's different every school that I go to, sometimes there's a, you know, most of those places, there's an officer on duty that comes and goes through additional checks to, to get that person in. It's happened to me because I had a guy with me named Dennis Anderson and he couldn't get in. So we stood there for 10 minutes until they finally cleared him. So, you know, I, it makes me a little bit nervous. You know, there's a lot of stuff going on the first day of school and I'm not sure if you're planning on doing the first day of school, but there's nervous parents that are, got kindergarteners and first graders going to school and, and this is just lapping on some more stuff that we're not even sure how it's gonna work with the public and how it's gonna work with our employees. And, you know, I would just be a little bit guarded and say, you know, maybe we take baby steps and, you know, we can't, you know, just because they didn't get the letter or they didn't read the letter, you know, they're still our customers and we still need to make sure that we do the best we can to have this thing polished out because it's the last thing we want is upset people again when this going to school for the first time, especially at the elementary ages, is, is tough enough sometimes, so.
Well, and I'm willing to go back and review that again and lay out some other alternatives. Not close to that. I, I hear what you're saying and I don't disagree with you. I, I don't. I will say when we sat in admin meetings and I brought, had brought this up a couple times, getting, trying to get feedback from other administrators, I got a lot of blank faces kinda looking to me to just create direction. So I felt that we were a small enough scale that we could handle that, but I don't disagree with your logic about, you know, doing the piloted rollout to alleviate some stress, especially beginning of the school year and such. As far as, so I'll, I'll go, I'll look at some other alternatives. Just to cover the point about how we handle flags, in the two webinars that I've sat through, kind of as a salesy training type thing and it'll be covered, I'm sure, in the training that we do in August, you know, say you have a Dennis Anderson, for example. If flags that name, what happens on the, our side, what we see on the screen is a, hey, Dennis Anderson, here's the flag, and it'll show sidebar, it'll show the picture of, is this the Dennis Anderson you're looking at? And you'll see the picture that they're flagging if there's a picture available. And if it is, then you can go, I have a problem. If it's not, there's a button there that'll let you click like false positive. This is not the Dennis Anderson we're looking for. And it'll let it continue. So that initial confrontation is on whoever's helped checking them in. And if it gets beyond that, that's when you either have to bring in a building, like if it is flagged, then whatever, right now, whatever the process is, if there's a parent who's trying to come in, that shouldn't be coming in. Usually, that's gonna involve either the student resource officer, it's going to involve an administrator. What are those next steps? Because that part doesn't change much. I mean, it's still, what do we do when somebody's trying to get in the building that shouldn't be getting in? Just because the point of check-in changes doesn't necessarily mean that process has to change. Like here at the high school, if we have somebody trying to get in that shouldn't be getting in, Ruben's gonna be our guy. I mean, he's gonna be the guy that steps in and says, okay, we need to take this town. But again, so, so that's that. I mean, there, there are processes in place to handle that, so, and that'll get covered again as part of the training. But I will go back and I'll...
I'd ask them. You know, I would ask all the, you know, there's gonna be two or three people at each building that are gonna be in charge of having to go through that. And yes, they make it look great on the webinar and, you know, and in theory, it all works. But again, you know, there's gonna be that practical experience and I think if you actually sat down with a group of people at each building and said, all right, what, you know, get their feedback. Is it, would it be helpful for us to run this through a building, gain some knowledgeable experience on how and what happens? Because, you know, maybe there's something with the, with the machine and how the machine works that it's easier to do and where it's located and where the people are and, and when you leave the office. Because again, we're, we're gonna be throwing this on the shoulders of one or two people that probably already do more than what they're supposed to be doing in that particular spot. So, you know, again, I, I would just be very careful that we try to make it as smooth as possible so that it's, it doesn't become, you know, bigger than what it is. Everybody agrees with it. I don't think anybody would disagree with it out there. If we can transition as smoothly as possible and, like I said, I, I can hear to tell you, I mean, I go into App Valley and Eastview High School all the time and App Valley did it for a full year. None of the other schools, and I laugh, I go to Eastview, I walk right in, I'm like, what's the deal? Like, well, they got the pilot, you know, and they did it for a whole year. And then they brought it to the rest of the schools in their district and to the elementary schools, you know, and they filtered it out with, you know, changing technology. I mean, I'm assuming technology's already changed since the day that you bought it. To some degree, they're gonna continue to update or, or make things better, so, yeah, I would...
What determines, sorry?
Sorry. Is this used only during the school day? Like, right now, you only check in when you come in during the school day. Once school's out, it's not in place?
You mean like during the summer as an example?
No, like after hours.
Like after, after hours.
After hours.
Why, I wouldn't, as dumb as this sounds, I'd say, what is our process now?
Well, it'd be no, because it'd be impossible. I mean, it's one school day.
It'd be difficult to do because the buildings are unlocked. You know, right now, when we do our best to lock down the buildings and, you know, like here, we can funnel people through the offices, you know, buildings like Richmond and John Clark, you know, we do our best to try to guide people into the office because we can't forcibly funnel them through with locked doors and hallways.
I guess I'm just looking at during the, the school day from when the school starts to when it ends. You know, I go into the offices, because I'm in different buildings, there's not that many people that come in on any given day during the school day. I mean, it's a page or two in the elementary school.
I don't know, but, I mean, I would guess it's more than that on, I mean, they have a little field trip thing, you got 50 parents coming to watch speech day.
I guess that's the other question.
I mean, you're gonna have days of...
If you have kit going on and you've got 60 parents coming in or that, are you gonna put it in place? Right now, we don't make parents check in if they're coming for kit, do we?
Well, you better, I mean, otherwise it doesn't...
We didn't for kindergarten graduation and they're, it was packed.
And that's a great question then, and if we're gonna do it, then you gotta do it. Because as soon as you say, well, we didn't do it for that, and if something goes wrong, then, you know, why do you have the technology to do it? So you, you need to do it.
Well, I think...
I, I hear what you're saying and I think those are separate conversations, like, you know, regardless if we're implementing this electronic visitor system or we continue to use paper or go to something else. I think, you know, that's a conversation that can, you know, by some opinion, needs to be had. It was like when I went to my daughter's kindergarten graduation this spring too, we just walked in and went, I work here, so it's a little easier for me to get in. My experience is different than a random parent.
What, what, do you know what percentage of false positives the system gets?
I don't have a number for you.
Okay. What, can I, am I, is it my turn?
Sure.
What, how do you set the flags? So I'm assuming that there's, people will be flagged just based on their own, maybe criminal background or whatever.
So what, there's two major ways. One of them is it checks against sexual predator or, sexual predator, is that the right word? Sorry. Database to say, is this, you know, this person not supposed to be within 500 feet of our building? Then the other major one is a custom database local to us. So basically, as an example, if we have a parent here that has no contact with their kids, we can manually enter that information into the system and so when they come through, it'll pop up and it won't say, you know, sexual predator or whatever, or offender, it'll say custom alert, no contact with kids, give us the relevant information.
So someone that has, you know...
That was my question, so if there's a parent that...
You got felony for, or not a felony, but, you know, whatever, for not paying parking tickets or doing something naughty that they shouldn't have been doing, it doesn't necessarily stop them from coming to a building.
This, this doesn't go down to everybody's parking ticket and things like that. It's the, the main, the, the big focus is the sexual offender list and then beyond that is the custom building of the list of like no contact orders and things like that that we feel are relevant to us.
Do you know if this is a national base or is it just state?
It does cover all the states and I am blanking now if it pulls from a national database or if it pulls from each state's state level database. And they did tell me that and I'm sorry, but I'm blanking on that. But it is, it's national, it's not just local here.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, I'll wait, that's fine.
Does, you know, the ones that I've seen, you know, you give them your license, some of them, it runs a license through it, prints out a name tag, you put it on.
Yep.
Others, you stand there and it takes a photo and it prints out a deal, is that?
Nope. So this one is the, the car, it's a scanner. It's not like a, it doesn't read the magnetic strip, it reads, like reads the face of it and it pulls picture and their name. And then it'll print, and then the badge printer prints out a badge with their name, the picture, and it also, there's a field that says where they're going. So they're going to the gym for the history of dance performance, or it's somebody coming in to visit this classroom, or it's somebody coming in to like, can, like they'll come in every so often to visit the kids in the cafeteria.
So drivers, they don't have a driver's license and I don't know what they do because I've always had one, but...
Manually enter a name.
And who does that?
It'll be whoever's manning the check-in, if you will.
Okay.
So as an example, I'll just pick on like Dee or Sue, if one of those two is the one manning the check-in station where the people are scanning, I don't have a license or I'm not gonna, they say, I'm not gonna give it to you, I don't wanna do that. Okay, that's fine, what's your name?
So is that a way potentially for somebody to work around the system if they were hypothetically?
It could be, but it's...
But if they give you a name, it's gonna pop up a picture and if that picture doesn't match, match the person that they say they are?
The name, the name still checks when you key it in. Obviously, the difference is, is we have to take them somewhat on their word of that, but what do we do now? You know, from what, and granted, these are salespeople talking to me, so let's take it for what it's worth. What I have been told is generally speaking, most people don't have a problem scanning the license.
But even if you type in their name...
Yep.
You're not really taking it, taking their word for it because isn't their name gonna pop up a picture and if it's not the person you're looking at?
Right. But if I'm Dennis Albert, and I've, I'm flagged, and I, and I know that, and I come in and say, my name is John Smith, which isn't flagged.
But isn't there.
But the picture's not going to.
You said a picture comes up.
But is there, does a picture come up?
For John Smith?
Because if I turn in my license.
Not if they're not flagged. What I'm saying is if they give a name that's not flagged, it's not, it doesn't pull up a picture.
Of everybody.
For what, right. My understanding is, is when, and this was four or five months ago now, so we can review it again in case the software's changed. But just typing in a name, my understanding is, won't necessarily bring up the picture.
It's only if that name is flagged. So somebody could give you a bogus name of someone that's not flagged, and you won't know to verify that it's them.
Potentially, yes.
Well, I would say, just these little discussions that are coming up right here, and the idea that when I walk in the office, I mean, Dee or Sue doesn't really have to do anything, I just, you know, I type in my thing, and they're able to sit back there. This is going to take, somebody actually has to take the license, you got to scan it, you got to, I mean, I, I would really suggest that you, you battle test this thing, because you're going to have all these things coming up in the heat of school starting. And I would, you know, at least converse with the people that are going to have to implement this, and make sure that they know what they're getting into. Because again, it's not going to go smoothly, and it'll be heartache, and then it won't work the way we want it to.
And I think there has to be a standard process for all the buildings. You can't have each building create their own process. They have to all follow the same criteria, they have to take the same action if someone's flagged, otherwise.
I think that's important, too, because like, if I, well, for instance, I have two children at two different schools. So if you go into one building, or if you had a middle school student or something, you would want, as a parent, to use.
To go through the same process.
There is going to be some difficulties with the Richmond and Rockville schools, just because their process, you know, it could be the same, but a lot of times, like, students let me in when they see me standing at the window, or teachers or something. So that's going to be tricky on itself. It will require probably some training or something. And then, also, the question I have is about Ruben's time, just if, especially if we're implementing, rolling it out across the district, is his time going to be spent either, you know, with false positives, or dealing with that kind of stuff?
Well, I'll argue that, and I will come up with a similar.
Yeah, I'm going to just throw you an idea. The D E F is very low stress, because there's not a lot of people, well, I shouldn't say that. There's, the preschool, hopefully would be less people, I guess, less going on. You can roll each building's continued, the people that are going to use it through that building, and have them go through it without being in the high-stress situation, and make them understand, you know, have them understand, and they can ask you the thousands of questions that they may have that come up. And so I, I think, I would like to see some, some more thought out plan on how it's going to be implemented, and how it's going to be implemented in each building. Because like you said, there's going to be different criteria for each building, based on how you get into the building, and where the machine's going to sit, and whether there's only one person, like in Rockville, when you go over there, there's only one person sitting there. Sometimes, yeah, I think there's only one sitting there every time I've been there, so.
Okay. All right. We've taken up a chunk of the time that we have allotted, so is everybody okay if we move on to social media?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Can you provide us an update as you've kind of thought through this? And I know you said that you have that scheduled, or the webinar scheduled for August. But can you just give us some type of an update, maybe at one of our next meetings, just in writing, so we know if we're talking to the public, that we know kind of where you're at, that it is definitely going to be rolled out all the way across, or if any of that changes?
Yeah, I'll give you an update.
That'd be great. I think this is definitely something that I'll, I'll hear about, just because when my friends are going into schools, they'll say, oh, what's this new system? So it would be nice to have that information.
Is there going to be one here at the district office door?
Not initially. Because we don't see the traffic coming through here, so the initial thought was, we would start up front.
So if someone does show up here, you got to send them around to the other side, is that?
Well, we can still do, since it's a web-based program, we could still do the name check, like, show us their ID, we type in their name, as an example. We could kind of do it by hand, and still do the check. We don't have the scanner, we don't have the printer. But because of the low volume of traffic back here, the initial thought was to not buy the scanner and the printer. We can still use the software back here, but it's just more of a manual process because of such a low volume.
How expensive was this whole system?
I have to go back and look, but it was like, I don't want to give you a bad number and then get yelled at later.
Well, you get around it, 10,000?
No.
20,000?
No, it was like somewhere between like the five and seven range.
All right.
Is there, and is that just, is that just for like the hardware? Is there like a software?
Hardware, software, the whole package to get started.
Is there support that comes along with that for a while?
Yeah. I haven't been able to tell you what that number is right now. I might have to go back and look.
And, I mean, the things that we've brought up, and the natural, just questions and little complications or whatever, I love the idea of increasing security for our district, and that's what I would like our families to have as their takeaway, rather than being frustrated or irritated. But to let them really understand that it's complete safety-based, this is what we're doing for your kids and our community. Work with us, you know, that, to put a positive spin on it.
Okay, good. Social media.
Right now, we will be starting the official go-live date, if you want to call it that, with social media for schools is July 10th. We're just using them, I guess, for, like, for better term, as extra help to be more consistent with our message through social media, to be more consistently using it. So kind of the basic process that we'll be rolling out to explain to the staff is, if you have something you'd like posted on social media, we have an email address, socialmedia@recory.k12.mn.us, very creative. That will be saying, email your picture, if you have a picture, kind of a short blurb about what this is, and, you know, and we have, there's basically a team we're kind of contracting with, although we have a primary person that will post it for us on our behalf. And if they get inundated with like, you know, 15 of them, their trickle rate is several a day. So it's not like suddenly you're going to have a blast of 20, and then a day of zero. Part of this is having somebody to, for lack of a better term, to schedule posts and bring them out, kind of in a semi-consistent fashion, so there's always a consistent feed of new things for people to see and view. And so, yeah, the biggest thing is just a consistent message, if you will, instead of a lot of it, and then dark, and then, you know, better, more consistent, I guess is the best word I can use.
And this is all coming off of like the Recory Twitter and the.
Right, the Recory Twitter, the Recory Facebook page, Recory YouTube page. And through this process, we'll also be generating a Recory Instagram.
And is this somebody that's internal, that's kind of curating this, or?
No, it's through a company, technically out of Wisconsin, yes, that we're contracting with. Their business is helping schools manage their social media.
And this was that 10 grand that we spent?
Yeah.
So that's what we paid them to do what they're.
Yep.
How far does that 10 grand go? Like, for how long are they going to, what does 10 grand buy us? Can't buy us forever?
Buys us the year.
And then we have to have someone in place to?
Well, either someone internally, which would be my preference, or we, if we like the service we're getting from them, and we opt not to bring somebody in-house to do it, then we would continue contracting with them. We really would have three options, either bringing it in-house and stopping the contract, continue the contract and not bring somebody in-house, or third option would be not hire somebody and kill the contract, because we don't like the service a little more than from them.
Oh, I'm not, I mean, I am, I'm not a social media person, I got nothing, I'm not on Facebook, so I'm clueless. How do we, how do we know? Asking the people that I might use is, how do we know if it's working?
So, I can't speak to Instagram personally, because I don't, I don't use Instagram. I struggle to keep up with Twitter, Facebook, and YouTube myself. And even Facebook and Twitter are waning. Anyways, they have a lot of analytic engines, basically, that track who's clicking on your page, how they're getting there, how long they're staying there, kind of your basic analytics of, you know, what, you know, this post got you this many views, and this many shares, and this many likes, and this, they have these statistical measurements for activity levels, and they don't share the black magic to it, but they have systems that you can go and look at to see, say, okay, this post was very engaging to our audience, and this post, not so much.
So to be very clear to us, at the end of one year.
Yes, absolutely.
Whether or not it's reaching people.
So how, how will this mix with all of the different sport Facebook, you know, so there's a track Facebook page, and there's a football, and there's every sport, and every activity has their own Facebook page? Will they speak to each other? Will there be parts that?
So ideally, what will happen once we kind of effectively go live, and I start handing off this work to them, is they will, as part of this, they will go and like, what I need to do yet is collect all of the Facebook and Twitter pages and stuff. And I, when I say collect, I mean, just get the links there, I'm not taking them over. So that what we are managing, the main district ones, can go and basically like them, if you will, so that, hey, people know that those are our official pages. I've tried to do my best with sending out emails to say, hey, if you have a insert here of your sport, can you let me know? Some people are good, some people are not. So I'm going to be hitting that a lot harder now that I'm, one thing off my plate, put another one on. But they will, the best thing I could say is they will try to share content through that page, if you will. You know, in an ideal, perfect world, depending on who you talk to, not having any of those pages, and everything funneling through one page is the way to go, obviously, that's never going to happen. You know, the football team wants their page, which is fine, they have a very good engaged community. I'm sure Trek has one, baseball has a very good website and a Twitter feed. So you kind of, lack of a better term, you kind of work with it. Social media is what it is.
So I'm, I'm a Facebook user, I don't know any of the other stuff. But I've, I've gone, and I have, whatever you did, liked.
Sure.
See, I'm not even that much of a Facebook user, apparently. But I've gone, and I've liked some of the sporting event pages because I've come across them.
Sure.
But I'd like to see it all.
Sure.
You know what I mean? And so I think it would be nice to not have to go and figure out, okay, what are all the pages out there, and so I can go find them and like them.
Yep.
And I can still get the information.
So.
You don't want to see it, you just go buy it.
So we are, you know, and this is maybe a question for you, can't we somewhat control, you know, our coach, I mean, they are part of us, and ask them, you know, you know, as directly as we can, you need to help us with this, and we really need to tie this together because we're trying to work on our website, and we're trying to find the information. And I guess I, I can't believe that you, as our boss, went and said, all right, this is something we need to do. And it sounds like it's pretty easy to connect all these things, if you just work together a little bit, and maybe I'm clueless, but it sounds like it might be, but.
Can this company just like retweet them on a schedule?
Well, that's kind of part of the process, like, or they'll, they'll like and follow, and whatever the appropriate terms or the appropriate social media, and then we can ask them, can you retweet this?
Because they already have a following base, so we don't want them to just get up there.
No, can you link it?
There can be the expectation for Facebook pages anyway, because that's all I know, is that if a coach, say the football coach, posts something on the football Facebook page, they can tag, tag the Recory District page, so that it goes there, too.
And well, yes, and that's, then we got to start, I got to start working with other people. Right now, the main focus is to get an aggregate list of everything in a central place, which will be for us, like on Twitter, we're going to try to get all the different Twitter feeds for like baseball, and I know there's a track one, and I'm sure there's a swimming one. To get those, have them start, we will start following them, so that we will see it in our feeds, so that then we can start retweeting it out to create that awareness, and kind of aggregate everything in there.
But I mean, you know, the initiative has to start with you, that we, we can't just let the football community do its thing because they've got followers, and we're spent 10 grand to try to make this in goal. So I think it has to be something where you say, you know what, you know, yeah, I mean, I maybe can't make you, but I'm telling you, help us out. And I can't imagine anybody wouldn't try to do it. So I think it's imperative that we try to connect, especially the big followers right now, to this, because then that's going to grow momentum in what we're trying to do, which is ultimately going to make, you know, our $10,000 worth of that.
And I think it's, it's a symbiotic relationship, too, because we'll, we'll have a different base, and we might have a lot of the elementary kids that are going into the elementary football programs. So when they've got camp for fifth graders, well, we've got their audience.
It just spreads the word that.
It's a symbiotic relationship, it's not just.
I know a community that's very excited for this process.
This will be really good for.
She almost jumped out of her chair when I told her about it and how we make it work. So she, she, I know she's very excited about it, because she's ready July 10th, let's go.
She's gotten, Stephanie has done a good job with getting stuff out.
A lot of the coaches have parents that, you know, it's volunteer parents that do it. So it, you know, you talk to some of the coaches, I don't know, have I got these, these people do it? So I, I think we can make it happen, but I, we just, we can't forget to take those steps.
Yeah, well, it'll be part of the process that I need to do as we roll this out into the school years. Works through Jroll and the Coaches Association more to try to get more of that information.
I think this is a, a nice transition. I think this is the right thing to do for this year, but also whether we eventually can put somebody on, you know, somebody from within that can do this for us, going further, I think this is a really good transition year to have a company doing this, pulling all that together. It's just going to set us that much further ahead, either. It's very valuable. What's that?
Kind of set the foundation.
Yeah, and then start working, because that's transition, if volunteers have been doing it, or the coaches, that's a transition thing, kind of a baby, you don't want to give up if you've been doing that, and just to see the success all the way across.
Well, and regardless of what we do, there's no way we're going to stop the football team, or somebody else, from having a Facebook page, or a Twitter page. Yes, we don't want to do that.
Right.
We just want to somehow have them speak to each other.
And it'd be interesting to know what this company has experience with, like, tagging like, St. Cloud Times, tagging WJON. Because I know there are schools that tag their posts with that, because that gives some publicity, and it's free, and then, you know, those people can spread it, too. So I think if we can add that component to it, not just reaching our community, outside of our community, where there's potential people to be part of our community.
That's great. That's a really good question, yeah.
So tagging is Facebook, retweeting is tweeting?
Twitter.
Twitter, or Twitter. So tweeting.
Don't double-tap on Instagram, you like the picture.
Never been on Instagram. I couldn't even tell you how to get to tweeting on Twitter, but, but you can also tag a tweet or a twit.
You retweet.
Retweet, retwit. Retweet, retwit.
I'm gonna let our more experienced professionals handle the acronyms, and I'm just gonna try to deliver the content.
But when someone's...
On Myspace?
What I'm getting at is if someone asks me, I can tell them, you know what, if you're in Twitter, baseball, you mentioned our, I could tell them, you know what, do what you gotta do to get this to our main site, so that the young families and the people out there can start seeing that this is a valuable place to go to. So, I just wanna make sure I could use that analogy, that they can do that.
Alright. Referendum. So, we discussed...
Our website with social...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to keep us on time, but, no, that's a good one.
That one, to be blunt, has been beaten to death, and I'm more, it's in process. I'm working with different vendors, getting different examples and ideas. One of them that I really like is called School Blocks, it has a very Pinterest style feel, I guess. A little bit I've looked at Pinterest, I went, yeah, it does. There's another one called Weebly, very popular in education. I need to do a webinar with them, yet to get some more details on what their paid-for product looks like. Most people use a paid product, but they're free. Free product. There was a third one that I looked at, a local gentleman here who lives in the area, who does kind of development for a living, for a company, but after I contacted him, he referred to me. A project he would do a year would be on the side, kind of nights and weekends thing, which generally I don't have a problem with. However, part of the reason we're in the situation we are with our website is because we started with a freelancer who was recommended to me by another school district. And when she decided to go private and not help us essentially anymore, because she works 40, 50 hours, we get a regular job, which is what I have in my project. So it's not really a road I wanna go down anymore. I understand it's local, and I don't have a problem supporting the local guy, but it's just a process. I don't wanna, again, if you don't mind. So there's one or two others that I wanna look at, Squarespace and Wix, you may or may not have heard of those hosting companies.
Wix, like W X?
W X, yes. They don't have a, an education presence in the same sense as they Weebly does, but they're very popular website domain hosting companies, and so I just wanna give them a feel and see if they can do anything for us. But it's in process. And this will, honestly, from start to finish, will probably take us another six to 12 months to be completely 100% cut over, just because of the massive overhaul we're talking about here. I mean, we're starting from scratch. I mean, it's really what we'll be doing, is starting from scratch.
And that, do you, how, how can you pay for that? Cause that's can't fit in your budget, can it?
Well, so, with these, with the, well, you're right, yes. Well, and that's part of the reason we're here, is I had been working with a company out in the cities called August Dash. They're a development company, fantastic people, really good at what they do. They've helped other school districts in the cities build their websites. We currently host ours on a platform called Drupal, a content management system, for those interested. Very powerful stuff. And what, with working with them, and them coming in halfway through the project, or kind of most of the way through the project that we kind of started with this other person, who wasn't doing good work, by the way, I don't wanna put her down, in case anybody actually knows who it was, it was bad timing for us. They basically said, you know, based on the way everything is and what we're trying to reverse engineer, it would actually be cheaper in terms of their labor to start over from scratch. Now, to build everything up from the ground up, we were talking in the neighborhood of $30,000 to $60,000, that's a lot of cash. What we're looking at here with like a Weebly, or a Wix, or a Squarespace, is a lot of that backend development's already done. You're given usernames and passwords, here's your templates, plug in your data, put in your pictures, put in your text, make your menus. So there's still man-hours required here, but the developmental stuff, a lot of the more geeky, dirty stuff, that's part of developing a website's already done, and that's what you pay this, you know, monthly or yearly service for. And so at this point, if we go with a Weebly or something like that, we'll just be having probably somebody internally. Kayla Young Bloom's been doing some more web stuff for us this past year, and I know she's been doing well with that, and I think the plan is to kind of keep her working on that kind of stuff. So, as an example, say, we moved to Weebly. Okay, we're basically building the site from the ground up. I will work with her to help develop the structure to say, this is what we need the pages to look like, and here's the content we need there. And then from there, she would do the bulk of the work in the sense, or whoever it is, would do the bulk of the work of keying in the data, putting the pictures up there, and that kind of stuff.
Will you be getting feedback from the users, parents, community members, on what the content should be and what it should look like?
We can. One way we can do that now is part of the website that we have, we utilize Google Analytics, which is a service from them, kind of similar to like Facebook and Twitter analytics, where we can actually see where people have gone. So let's say a lot of people go to food service menus.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not exactly what I mean, because right now I get so many comments of, I don't go to the site because I can't find anything I want. And so your Google Analytics are not gonna tell you what it is they can't find that they wanna find. So to me, I think it's really important, if we wanna do this right, and we want it to be well-received and successful, that we're getting good feedback from our users.
I think, what I think I hear you saying is, you know, so at the beginning of school year, we all have open houses, all those things, and you somehow poll who is interested to say, here are the things that I wanna be able to find. I wanna know the schedule of the day, I wanna be able to find the schedule for the school year, I wanna be able to find the lunch menu, I wanna be able to find these different things. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I wanna be able to easily find...
You know, the staff directory. I mean, I've tried to find this.
I know they're out there, but they're not.
So I think that's what, you know, she's saying, is that it has to be, you know, cause again, I deal with schools every day, so I go to their websites a lot, and some are really easy. I mean, what I'm looking for emails, they're right there. I'm looking for, you know, numbers and when people, what the class schedule might be, or when the school's this or that. We just have to have a good feel for what it is, you know, and somehow try to poll those people.
Do we know if there are any other districts that are using School Blocks or Weebly? That we'd be able to go look at their sites?
I don't know of any with School Blocks. I just came across them in my search. I know they're a K-12-focused, you know, School Blocks. Weebly's hugely popular in the education space. I can't say I know anybody off the top of my head that's using it for their whole district website, but like, as an example, National History Day, when all the students do their websites, they use the free Weebly, and I think actually Weebly is partnered with that National History Day for some of that stuff to help create that. So, what I can do, what I will do is I'll talk to some of the neighboring districts. I will, I'm pretty sure Sartell still uses Drupal.
Can you just contact School Blocks and Weebly and ask for references, or so that you can...
Right, I can do that. But what I will also do is I will contact tech coordinators in the neighboring districts, just to see what they're doing, how they got there. Did they do a survey? If they did a survey, can they share their questions with us, and ideally their feedback, just to give us some basis to start with.
And then, we talked a lot about here, about just process of continuing and keeping up with the site itself. So I think it's kind of two things happening going on.
Yes.
And I think, Scott, you know, we've talked about that a lot, we have to be ready to implement what it is we've just either created or purchased, and be able to keep it going.
Maintain it.
Yeah.
There's a cost to that.
Well, obviously, right. But I'm tired of hearing about it. Brian's tired of hearing about it, we're all tired of hearing about it. And technology's not going away, phones aren't going away, people are accessing more and more information on their phone, so we're gonna have to bite the bullet, and I don't think the community, you know, I think technology's one that they'll support if we're giving them what...
What they want. Well, maybe we can use it as part of the referendum, which is the next topic.
Thank you.
Wow.
Do you want me to just give a quick update of where that's gone?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so I, so this came through Facilities and Grounds at our last meeting in the last couple of weeks, and, but we've also been discussing it for a number of years, actually. And what Brian has done over the years is to convert his budget into kind of a 10-year plan, because just like computers, or just, you know, like Windows and flooring, computers, systems, and hardware needs to be replaced on a similar schedule. So Brian put that on a schedule, and when you do the math without, and another thing that we were learning at that same time is that computers can get pretty old around here, like nine, eight, nine years old, and so...
Right, at the time, we were, we were bumping up to computers that were 10, 11 years old, and we still have a couple floating around in areas that are at least that old. But basically, there was some, I'll use the word shock, that we were using computers that they thought they were in the five to seven-year range. You know, ideally, industry standard is about five years, some do as little as three years. I know some places will go longer, but generally what I read as industry standard is five years on a rotation, whether it's computers, servers, even networks, although that was a little aggressive for us. So what I came up with and I brought was basically, what does it look like if we have computers on a five-year rotation, networks on about a nine-year rotation, which is kind of stretching it, but, you know, we're buying quality components and hardware, so we should be okay there. Basically, what it boils down to is depending on the year, it's a bit of a fluid number, anywhere from $240,000 to $275,000 a year is kind of what we came up with, when we put everything together.
Wasn't that, wasn't that rotation with computers at seven years?
I hope it was five.
Okay, well, you know more than I do.
I'd have to go back and look. I thought, I remember it being five. I know I looked at what seven looked like, and I think that knocked it down a little bit. Basically, the point is, is stuff's expensive, and we get a discount in education. So, you know, like right now, I'm looking at computers that are gonna cost us about $500 a unit, that's a great price for what we're gonna get. And I'll probably be buying 125 of those this year. I'd like to buy about 160, but square peg round hole, we're making it work. So, yeah, I love the idea. I know it's something I've kind of, you know, asked for, at least hinted and said, hey, maybe this is something we should look at. I know we just did the building referendum, so maybe it's difficult, but I love the concept, I wanna be a part of it in any way I can, so...
Yep, and so Brian's budget is $150,000.
Currently, yes.
Currently, it was $100,000 a couple of years ago.
Well, when I started, it was 75.
Okay.
And then when we built this building, I kind of raised the question of, I'm getting three more computer labs, do I get any more funding? And they added $25,000 to it, so it got up to about 100, and then since then, with the, was it the long-term facilities maintenance money, I think is kind of where we shifted some of that.
Yep.
Because we were able to play with numbers essentially in accounting terms, we were able to get that 250, which has been fantastic. Been great.
But we're still about $100,000 to $150,000 short to meet those, to meet your...
I would say so, yes.
So that's where the conversation was like, how do you pay for it? So do you cut programming, other types of programming internally, to have those systems running well and all that? Do you think about, do you talk about, you know, doing a referendum? So we've had those conversations in the committee, at a committee level, about what to do.
If you do a referendum, do we have some numbers? Do you have some idea impact? I'm wondering how it matches up with what we saved everybody by refinancing.
Yeah, actually, we're just getting those numbers back from the dollars. We're doing a number of things. One is having, we've been making contact with Tom Deans at Knutson Flynn and Deans, who is our election attorney, and getting timeframes and all of those pieces put in place. We contacted Albers, they're asking them to do a couple of runs, and I know they just sent those earlier today. Beth looked at those, I haven't had a chance to look at them today, but it appears, the couple runs are just a couple different amounts that we would be looking at, $200,000, $250,000, I think, annually for whatever length of time. Those numbers come out almost, depending on which one you take, according to Beth's conversation today, but they come out at about the same cost as whatever steps we've taken in terms of savings for folks. One's a little bit lower, cause it's a smaller dollar amount, and one is almost exactly where the changes would be if we hadn't made all the other refinancing decisions. So, they're, for most families, you know, average family, and Beth said she looked at her own, her own household, so I don't know what dollar value that was, but she said hers would be about $28 a year and change for the referendum to be...
So the PR piece, I mean, updating security, updating websites, implementing social media, Twitter, Facebook, I mean, all these keywords that are very, you know, recognizable to our community, and it's really hard for someone to say, we don't wanna improve security. It's hard for people to say, we don't want our website to be improved. It's hard to say, we don't wanna keep up with social media. All of those things are part of these dollars.
Or putting more technology in the classrooms.
Right, or, you know, so I mean, there's, I mean, there's so many bullet points that if we, if we get the message out there the correct way, and we let people know what it is we're asking for, and what it is we're approving, and what we're spending the money on...
But I think that even more than giving them a say in what they want on that website, what they, how they'd like our social media communication, what that present, you know, getting as much of their input into those things will give us more buy-in at the polls.
Yeah, so I guess that was my question, is this something that happens in November at normal election time, and we have until now, until then, to engage our communities and make sure they understand what it is we're asking? Have the open forums, have the, you know, some sort of a booth at the open houses, and ask them those questions, and let them tell us what, what do they think rated from, you know, importance? You know, where, what do you wanna see?
And we'll be pulling all those things together to bring that back to you in July. We would have to, according to the timelines that we've gotten, we would have to adopt a resolution to conduct an election by August 25th is the latest we could do that, but we'll bring the information in July, and we'll work from there. But yes, the plan would be, Brian's working on some of those bullet points, we're working on some of those as well in the district office to try and...
Yeah, so I think it's important that along with it, we have a good timeline of when things have to be happening, to make sure we don't miss those open houses, and make sure we don't miss the, you know, whether it's the paper, however, we're gonna get the information out, especially if we're gonna try to make it done, and then you'll get it done.
You've sent out surveys before, you know, about like usage of computers and stuff, I think you filled it out. And so what's the response on that survey? Has that been, compared to the number that you've sent out to like parents, is that a, is that a good means to get some information, at least from people who are in the community to do that?
Yeah, it's our best way, it's our least expensive way. We actually get, like, when we've done, like, Bright Bites is a great example, we usually, like, we've gotten good parent feedback, I mean, like, in general, we're not getting 20 people, we're getting at least in the hundreds, if not, I don't wanna use the word thousands, cause that's a big number, but it might be, I'd have to go back and look at the numbers. What I do know is at least with Bright Bites, we have gotten good feedback.
Yeah, I think if you, like, say, this is your chance to give feedback on what you feel beneficial for, and maybe if you come up with bullet points, you know, like, like school lunch, sports schedule, I don't know, some of the things.
Well, I think we give feedback.
And then have some write-in comments, and I think, cause I filled it out, I know I did, and I just didn't know if other people had...
I think I have to feed off of what we heard in the last election, is that people want more communication, they want an easier website to navigate, they, you know, so preface it as, here's what we heard last November, here's what we are asking, you know, this is what we're asking your input on, and then here's what we can give...
Can it be a link, you know, throughout the summer here, I mean, or if it doesn't get done, but it can be a link that we put in the record and we spell out some of these things, say, please go to this and fill out the survey, if you want to have a voice in how we go about, you know, fixing these things.
Scott could put it in this article or something.
Yeah, it could be like, it could be like, it could be the article, we could save you in...
Oh, my goodness!
Like, like seven, you know, sentences, and then there's the link.
Scott gets to go golfing on a Thursday instead of regular...
And then maybe like run it again. So...
My concerns, though, right now, is that referendums are not passing very well.
Well, we kinda talked about that in the meeting, that it's, you know, we have to do it once to try to gain momentum to get it to pass second time. So it's kinda like, you know, you're gonna swing at the first pitch, and you're gonna miss, but you're gonna get it the second time, so...
And maybe you'll swing and you'll hit it.
You're right.
I mean, you gotta take the chance.
If, I think it's gonna be how we get the PR out there, how we present it, and the bullet points, and really making people feel like, you know what, we are gonna make a difference with this money, and comparing it to the money that we're saving, so that it makes people feel like we've saved here, and we're spending it here.
We didn't automatically just try to spend it. We want input, and we are watching each dollar spent.
Yes, and people like, you know, you sell this and you buy that, you know, well, we saved here, and now we're gonna reinvest it into this.
But before we do, we wanna know what you want.
We wanna know how.
What color card you want?
The problem we have, though, is only a little over 20% of our taxpayers are parents. So that means 80% of the taxpayers have no...
It's the same problem, I mean, it's the same...
You have to tailor your message to all of your audiences. So you have multiple, you have multiple PR and marketing campaigns that, for this audience, here's the message, for this audience, here's the message.
What is the message to the taxpayers that don't have kids?
The grandparents in here, it's...
Thank you, yes, I am!
It's, I wouldn't have done that unless I was positive.
Great, got the real.
It's the schedules, you know, let's face it, they don't need necessarily, you know, the lunch menu, they don't need, they know how to get to the dang fields, how to get to the school, how to get to the auditorium, a map of the school, I mean, so, you're right, then, we have to figure out what it is that those people want. There's neighbors, there's people that had kids that went to school here, you know, we can't just sit back and say, oh, there's only, you know, 20% of them, but that's always gonna be that way. We need to do a good job of PR-ing it, sending our message out, you know, and maybe we find out in a survey, we have them rate, you know, security, website, but when we find out, you know what, security is important to people, wow, then we highlight the heck out of the fact that we are implementing this security system, and we are gonna, you know, make sure it's working in all these buildings. So we also can find out what it is the public thinks. I think website probably would be number one, but we might find out security's number two, and social media's number three, and, you know...
So, we've had a long discussion with Brian. The, I think that this is, this conversation is really interesting, and I think it could keep going. We, this will be coming back in July, is that correct? I understood you're correct, right. So this will be coming back in July. I do think that this, as this starts to gain momentum, cause right now we're just in the information gathering phase, as far as talking with Ayler's, talking with Knutson. When this comes back in, in July, I think that, that we need to talk about this, but I think it would make sense for this to get referred to an ad hoc subcommittee, because I think a lot of these conversations need to take place at a more of a subcommittee level.
Well, then, to pass a referendum, you usually have a referendum committee, which is composed of people outside of the board, because even though we can give information as a board, we have to present information, we can't tell people to vote yes for it.
Right.
As an individual, you can say, vote yes for it, but as a board, we can't. So we have to make sure we keep those two roles separately.
So I think for now, I'd say we should start writing down ideas for this conversation when it, when it comes forward, but I think that I'm hearing a lot of really good things about the PR, tailored message, survey, engaging our community.
We just have to be very aware that it's not a lot of time.
Right.
Between July and elections and November.
That's why I think the timeline of when things have to happen is really crucial, Scott.
Also, you need to start thinking of people who would be on that committee that would be willing to help run the referendum campaign.
Because, yeah, because can we run it? Participate in it?
We can participate, but it's generally better to have a parent or a community member as...
Well, and can we, can we ask? Can we put something in somewhere, asking if people are interested in helping the district?
When we ran the last referendum, which I thought was very clever, the district office send out, sent out invites, like formal invites, like you have been asked to be, you've been selected, or...
But, so we picked them.
Yeah, I think so.
We invited people.
Yeah.
And I think we had a, everybody turned in names of people they thought would be interested in...
My, my worry of that is that there's probably so many more people that, you know, could be interested and may have a background that would be helpful that we...
Right. And, and somebody that might even be questioning, but want to see what the process is that might, we might be able to engage, and they can help us with the pieces that they weren't so sure about. So I think, as much as I like to invite the people that I think would help us, you sometimes get the same group of people that are thinking the same way.
Right, group think.
And we have to somehow try to get that group of people randomly that, like you said, are gonna think differently than what we're thinking here. So somehow, I think we gotta be a little bit more openly selective versus our own little worlds.
Okay. So be thinking about it between now and July, then, is that what I'm hearing?
And you will, I think, attempt to lay out a timeline of what you think, where we need to be, I guess is what I'm looking for, is, you know, here's when we need to have these different pieces happening.
That was what we wanted to know.
Something that's reasonable, I mean, not, you know, exactly, but dates, you know, by August, we gotta have, okay.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations on Sam.
Baby number four. And five.
See you later.
See you guys later. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we are gonna move back up to action items. We have, so, oh, wait, is that right? Yes, policy, okay. So action, action item 7A, approval of specific bills. Let's see, yeah. So I move to approve the invoice to the Cold Spring Bakery for the amount of $148.20.
Second.
Second by Jason. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Lynn abstains, motion carries. I move to approve an invoice to BSN Sports for the amount of $2,083.06. Second?
You might as well either, though. U.S. Games is...
We can do it at the same time, and for U.S. Games, for $62.98. So, sorry, that was kind of a clumpy, do you...
I'll still second.
Okay, so second by Lisa. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
Shannon abstains, motion carries. Let's see, okay. So next is the Minnesota State High School League. It is, the discussion is regarding adoption of the renewal of membership and the viewing of why we play video. So...
You guys can move out of your seat if you're...
Is, do you wanna...
I couldn't watch it from over there.
Is this the same video that we've watched before? It's the same video? And is the Minnesota's...
We all have watched it together.
Is that something that, just because we're running late on time, I'm wondering, can you watch it at home? Or is the state high school league wants you to watch it as a group?
Well, the high school league wants you to watch it as a group. It's also a very, very large file.
Okay.
It would have been in your package, so you could, ought to put it in, load it.
Is it on their website?
I don't believe it's on there, except it all, I don't believe it's on there.
I meant to, like, just go sit in one of those chairs.
Oh.
I'm just kidding.
I'm comfortable.
We can take the time, I mean, that as well.